Okay, I'm gonna call this session of the Board of Equalization Special Meeting to Order. I'm the Chair, Eleanor Thompson. And we're first gonna have roll call, Mr. Brett Towne, Vice Chair.
Present.
And Theresa Sellers, member.
Present.
All right, you have a new member. This will be her first session with us. Let me ask everybody to silence their phones. And for the record, notice was legally posted for this meeting. Let me explain our procedure. When we call you, you come and sit in this chair. And we'll hear from you why you think your assessment is not correct. And then we'll hear from the Assessor's Office. We will not make a decision today. We meet on Fridays. Fridays are our decision day. Because we're gonna hear about 11:00 or 12:00 this week. And so after Friday, when we make our decision, the Clerk's Office will mail you a letter. Depending on where you live and how the mail travels, you'll probably get it either Saturday at the latest Monday on what our decision is. We will actually set the value. Okay? Am I understanding that? Okay. So we're gonna start out on our agenda here as posted. The first item is gonna be discussion and possible action regarding the minutes of our last meeting, which was January 22nd. Do you have a motion?
Yes, I move approval of the minutes as posted in the agenda.
A second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Our second item is BOE number two. And that's account number R127271070. Richard Lloyd.
He's the one that got moved.
He got moved.
Yes.
All right, he's been moved. The next item is BOE number three. Account number R124181470. Brian Smith. Are you present?
Here.
Okay, you can come and see. And your correct address is 3800 Chickasha.
Correct.
Edmund 73013.
Yes.
All right, you got, you got notice of your assessment?
Yes.
You do like it?
No.
Okay, what, what do you think your value should be?
At the most, 419. They had assessed it at originally 497. And then they adjusted it to 464. The comps that they gave me, the first two, well, I'll go by the highest one, which shows $156 a square foot at the sale price time. They're saying time adjusted value is 165.5 a square foot. But this house sold in 2022. The value.
You bought it in 2022?
No, this is one of the comps that they've.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
They referenced. And so that house in 2022 might have been worth that amount. But if you look at more recent values of these other two comps that are in my neighborhood, Comp 1 and Comp 2, both of them, one sold in two months in July of this last year. And then the other sold in September of this last year. The first one took two months to sell. The second one, the more recent one, took six months to sell, indicating that the value of the houses in my neighborhood and the, you know, desirability of them has gone down considerably. I think the reason that my house was assessed at a higher value was because the neighborhood across from mine, which is Fox Lake, they have a lake. And then the housing condition that they're building next to mine, which is Cambria, is selling lots between 110,000 and 165,000. I think if you go by the actual comps, which are the most recent ones, you've got $135 a square foot at the time adjusted price and $141 a square foot at a time adjusted price. And if you average those two together, that puts mine at about 419,000 a square, or 419,000 total. And I think that's a fair value. I honestly believe that the taxable value should be lower than the market value. That's how it's always been whenever I've owned a house. But if things have changed, please let me know. But that's what I believe the house is actually worth. And if I could get 490 for my house, I'd sell it to you right now.
Okay, so just, everybody listen up. We don't concern ourselves with taxable value. We only concern ourselves with fair market value. It's what a willing buyer and a willing seller will pay. And I know people get a little antsy because they think when their valuation goes up, that there's a correlation that their taxes will go up. And that's the real gripe. But we don't concern ourselves with taxable value.
And, and the value that I gave you is according to the fair market value that they, they said. You know, if it is 135 currently, based on what they're saying, and 141 according to what they're saying, if that's what we're going by, then I still believe that my house is at the most 419.
When did you buy your house?
2019.
You've been there a while.
Yeah.
And you remember what you paid for it?
360, 359?
And have you made improvements on it?
No.
All right. So your, your gripe is not the comps they chose, or your gripe is the comps they chose?
I believe that the comps that they chose, the third comp specifically, is not a valid comp based on the fact that, A, it's sold in 2022. It has an additional bath on top of mine. The other two comps are closer together. Both of them have an additional half bath on top of mine. I have a two and a half bath. These are three full baths. And I think that that is closer to what the value of my house would be. If you knocked out the bottom comp and you just went by either 135 a square foot or 141 a square foot, my house would be in that same range. And one of these is diagonal to my house. The other one is diagonal to the left. And, and that's closer to what my house should be worth, in my opinion.
Did they use any comps that are in the two neighborhoods that you think are unfair to come here?
Originally, I could not get confirmation that they had done that. I don't have documentation that they had done that. But the other indications were that they had gone the surrounding area. I then requested them to find comps that were closer to my house. And these are the ones they gave me and adjusted the value accordingly. But even then, you know, at 464, that still makes my house.
164 a square foot?
Yeah, 152 a square foot.
Or 164 square. 164 with the land.
Yeah, okay. So yeah, considerably more than either one of these houses of Comp 1 or Comp 2.
Most people like to brag about how much their house is bad.
I mean, if, when it comes time to sell it, I'm sure that I would. But as it is right now, you know, I didn't say anything about the taxes over the last five years. I'm concerned about it now because it has continued to go up. And the value of the house, I believe, has gone down this year considerably. Just looking at the market, the way it's been, the interest rates, the way they are, I do not believe that my house is worth what they assessed it at.
Any questions for him? Brett?
Yeah. All of these comps are in your neighborhood. This is, this is south side of 33rd by I-35.
South side of 33rd, south side of 15.
15, I'm sorry. Okay.
But you said Comp 3 was across, is in a neighborhood across the street though, right?
No, it's in the same neighborhood, just further closer to the, to the entrance to the addition and sold, you know, in 2022, when the market was much higher.
These houses are typically about 30 years old, 30 plus minus.
All three of these are newer than mine. I'm, I'm at 40 years now. 41 years? It was built in the 80s, so 44 years, sorry. Can't do math.
And Fox Lake is probably 20 years or less across the street.
Okay.
I have no questions.
We have two equal representatives of the Assessor's Office. We're 20 past and type this.
So, yeah, the property was purchased in 2019 for, we showed it, 360, and it was a valid arms-lane transaction sale. We have the home at 3,037 square feet. Based on the notice of values that he was assessed at, originally at 497, was $163.65 price per square foot. And based on what we initially lowered it to, based on the three comps that we used, which included that 22 sale for 464, puts him at 152.78 per square foot. And we did look at, we went with our comps because there weren't a lot of, you know, sales to go off of. And sometimes we'll have, we go back, if we need to, we can go back as far as 2020 to find sales that we can make adjustments for. Now, I do agree, going back to 20 will be, you know, you're looking at a lot of big adjustments. But we do make adjustments for that 22 sale. Get it as close to his as possible. When it comes to the different bathrooms and different qualities, we do make adjustments for it, so. And there was a remodel on this house, but it was back in, it was back in 2019. We had a little bit of a remodel that was put on the property, which changes the effective year built of the house. So he was right that it is that age. But anytime there's a remodel done to the property, we go by effective year built. And that's what our multiple regression analysis will do, is use effective year built.
Was that prior to your purchase of the house?
Yes, and my understanding was that the remodel was done in 97, 98, not 2019. There, there was additional, there was additional garage space that was added on at that time in 97, 98. But as far as 2019, I'm not aware of anything other than, you know, tile done in the bathroom and just trying to get ready for sale. But not an entire remodel that I could tell on the house.
Now, the remodel is more than likely based on an MLS we look at. So there was a, when there is a sale, our sales analysts will look at what that MLS will say. And if there's any kind of hint of anything that's been done, pictures or anything of that matter, they will put a remodel on it. And we, more than likely, it's reflecting what the 2019 MLS was saying. But it wasn't like a significant remodel. You know, we consider 75% to be a full remodel. This one was very minute, so it changes the effect of your build from 1980 to 1989. He did provide comps, which I did look at, the ones he provided. Four of the five I could use, there's one I could not use, which was 1201 Fox Lake. We have that deemed to be an invalid transaction. It exceeded reasonable market parameters, meaning it was undervalued for the area. I initially, like I said, did lower him to, or Mr. Smith, to 464. I can, by looking at his comps that he provided, I can go down a little bit more. But the best I can do is support, I can support a median value of 455, 455,000, based on the comps that he provided. And that's using 3212 East 32nd, 1309 Fox Lake, 2521 Stonehenge, and 1709 Talalaw. All those were valid 23 sales.
Okay. No questions?
No questions?
Right, no questions.
You get the last word.
That would still put me at close to 150 a square foot. And I still feel like even at the higher end of the house that sold in July, that's still $9 a square foot more than that. I'm, I'm willing to compromise. I just feel like it, I still think that's high. I would, I would think that if we could somehow meet in the middle, you know, and say, you know, put it at 430, I would be happy with that. I still think that's higher than the other houses in my, in my neighborhood. And if I was to put it on the market, I don't think I would get that. But again, thank you for your time, and I appreciate you hearing me out.
You're welcome.
Need anything else for me?
Nope.
All right, have a good one.
All right. All right, our next one is BOE number four. We've got Mark Smith.
Another Smith.
Another Smith. This is account number R206781520. And it's the correct address, 3125 Spyglass Hill.
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
So my wife and I, Helen, who's behind me, we purchased our house almost a year ago, February 28, 23, for 168, for 680,000 or $160 a square foot. We received the Assessor's Letter showing an increase of 21% in assessed market value from 600,000 to 727,000, which is $172 a square foot, an increase of $127,000 in less than a year. I contacted the Assessor's Office and asked for an adjustment. The gentleman I spoke to, his name was David, told me he would mail me comparables, which he did. And I received those comparables and researched it and found that those three comparables were the highest comparables in the neighborhood. I found three comparables not as high. Do you want me to go through those comparables?
Yeah, you can tell me how your, your comps and everyone theirs.
Okay. All these houses are in my neighborhood. Their comps are in my neighborhood. 2816 Cumberland sold March 17 of '23 for 167 a foot. 2809 Spyglass sold, which is right down the street from me, for 168 a foot. 3201 Sawgrass sold last month for $131 a square foot. We also found a house yesterday walking the neighborhood for 3408 Dornich Drive. And it was put under contract, or listed on December 10th and has subsequently gone under contract at $159 a square foot. We don't know the contract price. Could be above that or below that. But to me, that shows the market is not increasing to this, to the rate that they're indicating. I believe our house shouldn't be any more than what we paid for a year ago, which is $680,000. And I did bring those comps.
What month did you purchase the house?
February.
February. Okay, so we've had a whole.
And just for you guys' information, this is a valuation December 31st. So anything that happens after January, we don't consider. So, you know, if, you know, a house sold yesterday, you couldn't come tell me what it was. Because it's the valuation at the end of the year. So I think you gave me the 3201 was a January sale that.
3201 Sawgrass.
Right, the one that was 131, so we can't consider that. And the one that's under contract, we cannot consider because that's, that's past December 30th. Just for your information for future reference. It's a 1231 valuation. Something else gonna, oh, so yours, that's, you threw me. I wrote down, and so correctly, that your valuation that they've sent is 727,500, right?
Mm-hmm.
And I have that in '23, it was 705.
On the letter, they said, yeah, 613 for '22. Saying I could be confused. I looked it up myself, so.
You gave a 650, what year was that you were given?
I think that would be on this. Last year, this year? That's what was mailed to me, and that's what I.
Okay, this is taxable, we're gonna do taxable. We do fair market.
So what is the fair market value of my house?
680.
Or is it this number here?
The fair market value is what the 727 is. And last year was 705.
This says 60452.
Okay, well, help me out here, guys. Where am I giving the 705?
So he was grandfathered in, wait, oh, man.
Yes.
He was grandfathered in as of, when he bought the property in February of '23. He was grandfathered in under that 60452 number, which is the taxable value.
Okay.
The market value last year was 705. But the taxable was 60452.
Right, which we don't deal with.
Right.
Okay. So your increase, in fact, was from your purchase price of 680, which you were able to get below the fair market value. You know why?
No, I thought the house was on the market for a couple of days. Well, I, I, it was an arm lien transaction.
Sure, what would they ask?
680,000.
Okay. So your increase is 40,000, which is 680,400. Did you move upstairs?
I did not. Haven't, we haven't permanently moved to, we're in Pankassee most of the time. This is our forever home, our retirement home, you know.
The difference is 27,500 between purchase price and the current market value.
47,000 dollars, increase in value in a year. That just doesn't seem right.
That's kind of what happens in Edmund.
What, what did the county in average increase last year? Do we know?
Yeah. I don't have that in my hand, but I can find that for you for future reference.
Yeah, that county average is something we kind of like to look at too.
Okay. Okay. Now, you did your, you did your comps, and is, do you quarrel with their comps? Is it just that they?
I guess they pick the highest one, that's all.
Well, I think you're right.
Well, I know my neighbor.
Well.
Well, but you can't just take the high ones. You gotta take the loans with the high ones if you're trying to value a property. You can't take the most expensive house that has more benefits or more.
Now, that's what I was gonna ask you. It's not that it's just the high dollar. Are you saying those comps are not like your house?
Well, I don't know. I haven't seen them have the Assessor's Office on the inside. I don't know what the inside's like. You know, when you value property, you're assuming that it's of average condition or better than average condition. But you might have one house that's trashed and one house that's got everything in it new, even though it's a 15-year-old house.
You don't quarrel with the size, do you? Square, the square footage, the beds and baths? Okay. Anything else? That's all? Brett?
I don't have any questions. Any Assessor?
I wonder if any Assessor.
I didn't specify this on the last one, but I do want to say that the major intersections are off of Coltrane and Covell. And he is located right here, just off the, got a nice view.
Of course.
Yes, sir. And we, he did buy an arms-lane transaction at the very beginning of '23, so the market still had, you know, a little over 10, a little under 10 months to develop.
Right.
And we did use comps that were in his neighborhood. You know, the sales, you know, the 3,001 Cumberland Drive sold for 718,000, and it was 38, 36 square feet, so it's smaller than his. And then we also have 33, or excuse me, 2909 Cumberland Drive, which is much smaller, 3,320 square feet, sold for 785,000. So I mean, we're using good comps. You know, we've got some, we've got a couple that are, actually, all three of them are less than his. And initially during the informal, no comparables were provided.
And it was never given out.
But on the, on the informal appeal, there is an opportunity where it says there you can provide comparables on the form. And that's, that's the opportunity. But it's, it's okay. What I did is I did look at the information he did provide to the board because I like to, you know, see where he's coming up. And I'm using three of the four comps that he provided. I couldn't use 3201 Sawgrass Road because it was a invalid sale in dealing. It was bought with, from a financial institution, so we can't recognize that as a valid sale. But we did, you, I looked at 2816 Cumberland Drive, 2809 Spyglass Hill Road, and 348 Dornich Drive. And based on our comps and our analysis, we support a value of 729,340.
Okay, you, you frowned, so let me tell you. When they say invalid sale, so my house is worth $600,000 and I want to give it to my daughter. So I make the sale to her for 400. That is not a valid sale. That's what he means. Or in June, Butch Freeman has the tax sale and people haven't paid their taxes, they go up for auction. And so you'll have a house that's, let's say, a $300,000 house, and the unpaid taxes are under 30,000, and they get to bidding, and the bidding ends up at 140,000. That is not a valid sale. In this, I mean, it's valid in that it happened, but it's not valid for purposes of using it as a comp. You frowned when he said not a valid sale.
So a house that's foreclosed on and sold is not used as a comp, even though that's the market? That house is in my neighborhood and is in the market. That house sold for $131 a square foot, so that doesn't affect the value of my house?
Right.
Oh, wow, okay, that's. Also, the, you know, the comp, the, one of the comps they used is only 3,300 per feet, so. And that's hard to adjust. You should use comps that are similar in size, so I wouldn't use that comp.
They adjust.
Yeah, we make adjustments for everything. And if we see that there's an adjustment that screams, you know, much, much higher, sometimes we'll see adjustments in these properties. Like, anything that sells, we look at every, if we look at every sale, we won't use every one of them because sometimes you could have 200,000, 300,000 dollar adjustments, and that's just too extreme. And so we just use the best ones we could possible. And when you got homes that are still smaller than his, that are, you know, support a much higher value, that means he's got a pretty good deal for it.
You said your valuation was 729?
Correct.
Okay, on the paperwork, it says 727.
I'm sorry. I was using the comps you provided for the BOE, so yeah, he is on it. We do have him at 727,500. That was the, the appeal value, and that is what we finalized the value to be.
680, you sticking with 680?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do you have any other questions?
I guess. I can use the comp when Dornich closes, and I can use that comp to come back next year if it actually closes for $159 a square foot, which is actually less than what I paid.
Yes. Wendy, how close are you to moving?
I do have a question though. Did you say that you, did you use the 3408 Dornish? I thought that you say that. Did you use it, the one that, it was listed now or from a previous sale, sale previous to that?
No, we, I looked at, I looked at it, and I didn't use it in our initial analysis. I believe that was the. Yeah. Third comp, right. No, I did not um did not use that, because that was not provided.
You did not use it.
Right, yeah. I just provided it and looked at it based on what he provided for the uh paperwork for you guys, just to you know, entertain the fact and see where it was at, and it supports his current value right now.
What did you say, I'm sorry?
I was hoping it made you sing.
Oh, okay. We're we're fairly lenient, but we have to kind of stick to the the statute. So just just a heads up for you guys for future references. You really can't present to us something that you did not present to the assessor in the informal, because technically, this is an appellate review of what the assessor did. So if you come again next year, whatever you really want them to consider, be sure and give it to them, and I realize a lot of times this happens over the phone, but if you need to, I'm a footnote reader, so when you get those forms, you need to read everything on that form. So if it says that you can send comps, be sure and send them.
I got a question.
Sure.
How about if uh the people in the county assessor's office had no interest in looking at your data?
Well, you you tell us that when you get here.
Absolutely.
Okay. Do you think that it? All right, well, thank you for your time. Brett, we'll close this one, and we'll move to the next one, which is um George Anderson, R two oh two nine nine one three one zero. Is your correct address twenty eight seventeen Woodland Creek Drive in Edmond?
Yes, ma'am. Gregory. Is it Gregory?
I'm sorry, what did I say?
He said George.
Oh, okay. Gregory.
It is George?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Essentially, the, and and I want to go back because of kind of give you a little bit of information on why I'm sitting in here today. Last year, for the twenty twenty three evaluation, they had my house initially uh valued at seven hundred and eighteen thousand dollars.
Right.
And I came into the assessor's office, and they worked with me for an hour and a half looking at the comps and coming up with the information. And they ended up finally adjusting the value down to five hundred and ninety seven thousand. And I included in the packets that I gave you. They actually gave me the sheets that they ended up using as the basis for the five ninety seven, and I include, hopefully you all got a chance to look at my information. So I started last year at a five ninety seven value, and this year they came in with a lovely comp of si- seven hundred and sixty three thousand, five hundred dollars, which is a twenty eight percent increase in the value of my house. My house will turn twenty years old this year. And there are no houses in my addition that are comparable in age or size that have sold anywhere near the value that they put. Now, what I did before I came in this year, I called the county assessor's office and spoke with, I believe his name was Jerry, who he said he was like the manager of the assessor's office. And he said, well, you're right, something is wrong here. And he looked at older comps, because there haven't been hardly any houses that have sold in our area.
Give me, give me your mouse action. Where are you close to?
Um, close to Coltrane, yeah.
Or by Coltrane.
Yeah, either Brian and and Covell. We probably.
The closest?
Autumn Ridge. And um that's a good question, because there are three phases in the addition. I'm in the oldest phase. Our house is almost twenty years old, and there's a lot of houses that are being built that are brand new. They're selling for double or triple what I pay for my house. Well, anyway, so I called and spoke with Jerry, and Jerry said, well, there's no comps that I can really look at that are even recent that that give me any value, so he said, I'm gonna go way back. He went, he said he went back a whole, like ten or fifteen years and looked at it. And he came up with a value of six hundred and sixty six thousand. And um and and I go through and explain why I feel that that is way too.
Even the six sixty?
Yes, it's way six hundred and sixty six thousand.
What are you asking?
I'm asking six hundred thousand, because that's the current current market value of my house. And what I used is I went in here and first thing, I I was ready to show the uh assessor that I spoke with, and he said, I don't even want to look at your numbers, because as low as we can go, six hundred and sixty six thousand, when I walked in the office to talk to him. So I wasn't happy about that, because the year before, they'd been over backwards to look at the numbers to make some sense out of it, but the point I want you all to know is three to four years ago, I built a portfolio in Zillow, because I was getting ready to sell my house. My wife and I elected not to sell the house, but I kept the portfolio inactive on Zillow, and every month, they sent me a breakout of the current market value. And I sent that information in the packet that I gave you. But to give you an idea, in April of twenty twenty three, the value of the house was valued at six hundred and two thousand.
Yours?
Yes. In May of twenty twenty three, the value of the house was six hundred and five thousand. In June of twenty twenty three, it was five hundred and ninety six thousand. And I'm not gonna go run through all of them. November twenty twenty three was six hundred and five thousand. None of them were coming in the seven hundred thousand range, and none of them were close to six hundred and sixty six thousand. But I wanted you all to see that, but what I did do was I pulled a current market analysis that went back ten years, so that I could get some houses that had sold in my area. And I have nine houses, but I'll go over with you.
Well, and before you do that, yeah. And are you saying no houses have sold in your neighborhood in the last two to three years?
Oh, there have been a few, and I've included the most recent ones, definitely. Um, to give you an idea, uh twenty one oh nine Woodcrest Lane, which is a four bedroom, three bath, mine is a three bedroom, two and a half bath. It's about the same uh square footage. Uh, the house was built in two thousand and five, their house. My house was built in two thousand and four. It sold for a hundred and twenty nine dollars and fifty two cents a square foot, and that was in twenty twenty. Uh, twenty one oh six Woodcrest Lane, thirty seven hundred and sixty two square foot, so it's a bigger house, four bedrooms, three baths, built the same year as my house, sold for a hundred and twenty two dollars and a cent. And I'll I'll jump to some of the larger ones, because you all don't want to hear every single house, but here's a house on um Woodland Creek Drive, which is the same street that I live on. It's four thousand square foot, so it's about five hundred square foot more than my house. And it's a four bedroom, three bath, same age, two thousand and four, sold for one twen- hundred and twenty six dollars and eighty one cents.
What year?
That was uh that was two thousand and nineteen, is when it closed. Then I've got a house, Woodcrest Lane again, um, four bedroom, three bath, built in two thousand and seven, sold for a hundred and fifty six seventy one, and that sold in twenty twenty two, okay? So none of the houses are getting up near the range. I'll keep going. There's a house that sold at twenty eight twenty five Woodland Creek Drive. It's uh and it sold on twenty twenty one, so it is right next door to my house. It sold in twenty twenty one for a hundred and fifty eight dollars and ninety eight, uh ninety three cents a square foot. So again, if if the numbers are based on fair market value, how the heck did they come up with seven hundred and sixty three thousand, five hundred dollars for the initial appraisal? When there's nothing, because that's a hundred and ninety four dollars a square foot.
If you look at. Excuse me, you said that there is this name, is there another phase of this name?
There is.
A newer?
Yes, and I included that in here, so you all could. If anyone wanted to look at it, it was available, no one in the assessor's office wanted to. But there are newer houses that have sold for considerably more.
Upwards of two hundred?
Um, between a hundred and seventy two and about two eighty five. Some of those are million dollar houses. My house sold for four seventy one when I bought it. So the point is, those are brand new houses. My house is twenty years old, you gotta have to put some value to that. The house is not what it was. But the fact of the matter is.
What's your lot size?
Lot size point four six. It's but where we're at is, I looked at what Zillow valued the house in in twenty twenty three, or twenty twenty four, excuse me. And what they said was, they think the house runs in the low six hundred thousands, which is exactly what I believe. I want to pay my taxes. I want to pay the fair market value on my house. And I believe the house is valued at about six hundred thousand. That would be a hundred and sixty nine dollars and fifty four cents a square foot, which is eleven dollars a square foot more than the house next door sold for. To give you all an idea.
But but you you do know that what you're asking is only three thousand dollars more than they arrived at to you a year ago.
Well, they didn't arrive arrive at that value. They arrived at seven hundred and eighteen thousand after I came in and showed them the specs they looked at, yes.
So you're going from five ninety seven to six hundred?
No, five, well, yes.
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 On your request.
On your.
On my request, yeah.
So 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 you honestly think that the valuation of your house rose, you know, more than three thousand dollars?
I would honestly say that my valuation that I came up with is a hell of a lot more accurate than what the assessor's office did at seven hundred and sixty three thousand, five hundred.
You, but, okay. That that, we gotta go with six, we we gotta start at six six six, six six.
Okay, that's fair. Then I I would tell you, I would be willing to sp- wow, my gosh. I'd be willing to split the difference, but I can't, I just don't think it's realistic. Even at six hundred and twenty thousand, that's a hundred and seventy five dollars a square foot. Compared to houses in my neighborhood, same age, uh comparable square footage that are selling at a hundred and twenty three, twenty four.
Two years ago.
Two years ago, yes, ma'am.
Okay, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Brett? Just a second. Your problem with me is I live in the neighborhood just south of Fair Cloud.
Okay.
And I have a thirty year old house, where it's thirty eight hundred and fifty square feet, down here at about six hundred and twenty five thousand. So uh I see your point on both parts. I can't go back and really consider those uh comps that are three or years up from two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, or those, those are accurate.
There were.
And and we have seen prior to this year, I don't know what this year is yet, but years before, three years before, Oklahoma County, just on the average, increased eighteen percent. Um, don't know what it is this year yet, that's what I want to see, what what these fellows will tell me at some point, but um, I guess my questions are more to the assessor on some things after they get through their presentation, so I'm ready to go.
Any anything else you all would like to ask me?
None, none. We'll hear from them, then we'll come back to you.
Okay.
We're we're not finished with you.
Okay.
Which one of you guys is gonna do this one?
All right, so we he did appeal last year, um, and we did lower him uh based on the information that he did talk about. Uh, of course, obviously, this year is a different story, market and all that, but he does, I do want to touch base on the fact that in his particular area, in his area, there are not a lot of sales, recent sales, in twenty three. We do know that, it's a very difficult area where he is at. And I do want to point out that, so he's located over here, and he's been in his property since two thousand four, if I'm, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. And so this is some of the older areas over here, and then.
It is the oldest.
It is the oldest, yes. And then you got a lot of homes over here on Sandstone Ridge, which are newer homes. And and then you've got another area that's being developed over here. This is as this is as the December of twenty three area. So he is feeling the impact of homes that have sold in that newer area. Now, what we had to do was, like I said, there's not a lot of twenty three sales. We're trying to pull the, you know, the best comps we could possible, because we had to go um we're using sales from twenty twenty to uh twenty twenty two, that's the best we could find to get a value as close to his as possible.
But you make adjustments.
Yeah, yeah, we make all those adjustments for time and everything, and that's how we're arriving at the uh triple six number. And he did provide comps, and he did provide a good comprehensive report, and I looked at that report in great detail. Of the nine that he provided, I could only use six of them, because our uh, there was a couple of them that sold in nineteen that we could not use, because our system does not go back beyond twenty. We only do a four year sales cycle. And then there's twenty seventeen Woodcrest Lane, we had that, that one sold twice in uh once in twenty one and once in twenty two. So if I use those six comps, using our analysis that we use, I can support a value of, or his value comes in at a median of six hundred eighty four thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars. And that's more than what he's cur- what he was currently lowered to.
Right. And it was lowered to six six six.
No, you are lower to six six six, but I'm using the the comps that you provided. I went ahead and logged that into our system and let it do its calculations, and it supports the median value of six eighty four eight one seven.
So the assessor's office currently is is set at six hundred and sixty six thousand?
At this current juncture.
How do you how do you explain the the original twenty seven point eight nine percent increase year to year?
It's probably due, it's due to the fact that, well, the likely it's due to the homes on Sandstone Ridge that are a lot newer. And I've and I've been in that neighborhood for uh, I've been in that neighborhood for field work, and you got a lot of newer homes on Sandstone. And then you do have a lot of newer homes that are gonna eventually be built over here. And so he is feeling the impact of those newer homes that are selling. But we also feel that it's probably not necessarily fair to compare those homes with him when we do the final analysis, which is why he was lowered significantly than where we originally had him at. So at this current point, we support a value of six sixty six.
Let me show you this, just for your benefit. Let's, Mr. Towne asked for the county average median increases.
It's probably my estimation that this area of Edmond, or Edmond is probably more than that, since this is the taking in the whole county.
The whole county, sure.
But it gives us a basis of referral reference. Thank you all for getting that.
And I do want to mention real quick, sorry, that the initial value and price per square foot at seven sixty three, five hundred was two fifteen seventy four a square foot. And then based on the uh value coming into today, it was a hundred and eighty eight dollars and nineteen a square foot.
Okay, and um Mr. Anderson, what would what would yours be at six hundred?
At six hundred, it would be?
One hundred and sixty nine dollars and fifty four cents.
Yes. That's correct. And again, I'm I'm looking at the data that I get from Zillow. Zillow is a well respected real estate group. And what they do is they send me a breakdown every month of how the market's moving, and by the way, unlike everyone in this room, they had also all the upgrades and improvements on my house included in that portfolio. Do you guys have that? I tried to give it to you.
Well, I do know that Zillow is not necessarily a well respected service. They've had some issues in the past with not fully accurate, you know, their values being fully accurate as opposed to other online services, so we don't really put a lot of stock into Zillow.
You put stock in Redfin? You put stock in RevFint?
We, we look at everything, but we don't use their analysis, but we will look at it and kinda see as a reference point. We still have to go by what our system accounts for. We have to account for time, and they don't account for time.
Yes, you get the final word?
Okay, I'll, I'll just finish with a summary, just very quickly.
Okay.
Of the nine houses that I used for my analysis, they were all of comparable age and square footage, which I think has to be the major factor, because this is a unique addition. Houses that have sat for twenty years and brand-new houses that are being built left and right in a new phase. The average price per square foot of the nine houses was a hundred and forty-one dollars and fifty-five cents a square foot. The last house to sell was, uh, twenty-eight, twenty-five Woodland Creek Drive next to my house, and it sold for a hundred and fifty-eight dollars and ninety-eight, ninety-three cents a square foot. That is the largest square footage of any of the nine houses. And if you took that price and applied it to my house, it would have a value of five hundred and sixty-two thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars and twenty-seven cents. So when I say six hundred thousand.
Tell me one more time that, that, that age, I mean, the date that that house is next door.
It sold in, like, in twenty twenty-one.
Okay.
And it sold at a hundred and fifty-eight dollars and ninety-three cents a square foot. When I say I think six hundred thousand is a reasonable value, that's based on the Zillow data that they send me every month in an inactive file, but I do keep it active in the sense I update any improvements or things I do on the property. And that's at a current, uh, value of a hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifty-four cents a square foot.
Do you quarrel with the assessor's analysis that based on your comps, he arrived at one eighty-eight nineteen a square foot? I mean, is that what you said?
That isn't what I have, no. My comps don't come, my comps are less.
No, sorry, I didn't say that correctly. Based on your comps, the median price is six eighty-four eight one seven, sorry. Do you quarrel with that?
I don't look at his comps. He won't even look at my comps.
He said based on your comps, right?
Correct.
That I gave him?
Yes.
On those nine houses?
Yes.
Was that just six out of nine?
That was six out of nine, too. We could not use it because they were in two thousand nineteen. And I eliminated one because it was a twenty-one sale, and then that same property sold much later for, in twenty-two.
No, you're incorrect, because those nine houses, none of them sold anywhere near, how, what'd you say was the square footage?
Wait a minute, let, let me.
Price per square foot, that, that?
No, the median value.
Oh, value, okay.
Is six hundred and eighty-four eight one seven. Of your comps, six of your.
I know.
Now, you can't say no.
I can't say no, because I'm looking at. You're, let me, let me, here, here's the selling price. Four hundred and fifty-five thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and sixty-one thousand, uh, four hundred and eighty-nine thousand, five hundred and five thousand, five hundred and seven thousand, uh, five hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-one thousand, and one house at six hundred and thirty thousand.
And no adjustments?
That's what I show as the selling price from this analysis that was presented.
And some of those were two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one?
Yes, yes. I think you used six of them. I don't know which six you.
There could be a thirty-five or thirty-seven percent escalation in market value between, since then and now.
Well, my, my only other comment I would say is, if we're interested in getting to the true fair market value, why would you ever present me a value of seven hundred and sixty-three thousand five hundred?
We're not considering that. We're considering six hundred and sixty. Really? That's what we're considering?
Because they've adjusted those million-dollar houses out of there, they're not using those. Is that correct?
That is correct. Initially, when there is, when we do all this, it's taking account everything.
All the sales in that area.
But then it's not, which they agree, that it's not fair to use homes that are one-year-old or two-year-old in the analysis, where we're trying to break everything down to come up with a value. That's unfair to the homeowner, because his home is older. So it's not fair to use newer homes that were.
So at six hundred and sixty-six thousand, we're talking about a hundred and eighty-eight dollars a square foot. When the only house even close to my house sold at a hundred and fifty-eight, that's thirty dollars a square foot more, I don't think so. I think the most realistic thing I would say to you all, if you can't live with the, with six hundred thousand, split the difference, but even splitting the difference, the house is being valued way too high, way too high. And I know it's way too.
Well, we have not come to the conclusion, and we'll discuss that and, and reach a decision on Friday. However, at this moment, I will tell you that I think it is unrealistic to think that your house only increased three thousand dollars in the last.
Understand that.
I agree. Add something real quick? Sure. And y'all know this, we're being on the board, with the, with the sales that happened in twenty twenty-one, the, the, the issue with the Zillow part is they don't adjust for the time, and that's kinda what Brett was talking about. And that's what our analysis is doing, is adjusting for that time. If that house would have sold in twenty-three versus in twenty-one, well, we know what the market did. It increased. So that's, that's what our comps are doing, is adjusting for that time for what that house would have sold for in, in twenty-three versus in twenty-twenty. But again, we have the, the backup of the sales to support that.
But you don't in this instance, because that's been the problem from day one. You've got one group of houses selling for more than a million, and you've got another group of houses that are, that are twenty years older, they're selling at a fraction of a million.
But we, we've all agreed with that. That's, that's why we did this analysis, is to take out those million-dollar homes to, to come back, okay, hey, let's look at this again, compare, uh, of, of age, and not the new homes. Get, get it closer to yours. And we still use six of the nine that you did provide, which is still supporting actually a tad bit higher than what we currently have you at with those adjustments. And that's all I wanted to add, so.
Well, the only other thing I'll say is, it would have been nice when I came into the county assessor's office like the previous year, if someone would have sat down and talked to me. But after sitting there for thirty minutes and waiting to go over this information, the gentleman wouldn't leave the lobby with me. He just talked that we can't go below six hundred and sixty-six thousand. That's the number, period. So I politely asked him, you know, don't you wanna look at what I put together? I've got all the information here, the analysis, and he said, no, we can't go lower than six-six-six. We've got quotas we have to make. And I went, what? But irregardless of that, it, it would have been nice if I could have sat down, I could have sent you all a lot of trouble. I wouldn't have had to come here. I just wanna get the fair market value on the house. And if you say it's more than six hundred, I'm gonna live with it, but I still think Zillow's as accurate as anyone. They have all the upgrades and improvements on the house.
You'll be hearing from us either Saturday or Monday. You're welcome. So we're gonna close this one and move to B O E six.
Mr. Palm How.
Oh, okay.
In one moment.
Hello?
Yes, is, is this, uh, the Marshall residence?
Yes, this is Amanda Marshall.
Right. So this is a, the Board of Equalization calling for your hearing. Are you ready to proceed?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, and is your correct address one-two-four-eight Southwest Eight First Street, Oklahoma City?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Uh, tell us what you'd like for us to know about your valuation and what you think your valuation should be.
Um, well, we just had the appraisal done back in September, um, and we purchased it, um, on the first of October. And it was valued, I believe, one seven, one seven nine five hundred, hundred and seventy-nine five hundred dollars. And I just didn't understand how it was valued almost twenty thousand over what we just had it appraised for. And all the assessor could tell me was time adjustment. Well, if you look at the comparisons, that's what he was telling me, you know, the properties around, they take the comparisons and time adjustments. Well, if you look at all the comparisons in the neighborhood, um, I mean, the most that the time was adjusted was like eight thousand.
This is Brett Towne. I have a question. What, when did you purchase it again?
October first.
And you paid how much?
One, a hundred and seventy-eight thousand five hundred.
All right, thank you.
Do you quarrel with the comps that the assessor used?
Um, it should have been part of the appraisal that I sent to the county assessor.
All right. So you're, you're asking that there be no change in your valuation from your date of purchase till December thirty-first?
Uh, yeah, no.
Okay, did you offer any, any different set of comps?
Uh, no, that was it.
So we're gonna hear from the assessor, then we'll give you, we'll give you the last word, and then we will mail out, we have, we will make our decision on Friday.
Okay.
And so, and it'll come to you by letter, either Saturday or Monday.
Okay.
Okay, so we're gonna hear from the assessor, okay?
Okay.
So we have officially a September twenty-nine of twenty-three purchase of one seventy-eight-five valid armament transaction.
Ms. Marshall, can you hear him?
Here.
Okay.
And she's requesting, we have the initial request down to one seventy-nine-five, which would be one twenty-seven eighty-five a square foot, price per square foot. We, uh, the value this year before the, any adjustments were made was one ninety-nine-five, which was a hundred and forty-two and nine cents a square foot. We did lower the value based on the comps that we, uh, provided in our report uh, to one ninety-three-seven, which is one thirty-seven ninety-six a square foot, and, uh, Ms. Mar, the Marshals did provide comps that were in the appraisal, and I used those comps into our analysis, and it supports a value of a hundred and ninety-eight thousand six eighteen. And those, like I said, those are the comps that were provided in the appraisal that was submitted during the formal. So the, we decided that the comps that we used were, support a lower value even more than what her appraisal comps were supporting.
So as we sit here, what, what are you urging us to say? One ninety-three-seven or one ninety-eight-six?
One ninety-three-seven.
Okay.
So the strongest indicator of market value is the sale.
Correct.
Armament sale.
Armament transaction.
In October, November, December, in two months. You all are saying this house is worth how much more percentage-wise? I mean, twenty, uh, twenty thousand dollars in two months?
According to the data we have, that is correct. And like I said, we have to also use the comps to support that as well, right? And her, hers was a later sale, yes, but we, and I said, we're, the comps that we're using are, like I said, they're scattered out throughout the year.
Sure.
But that's, we arrived at one ninety, at the number we did, so that's kinda where we're at right now. Can't go any further.
Any questions, Chris?
No.
Okay, so, uh, Ms. Marshall.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, you say, you see that he used your appraiser's comps and arrived at one ninety-eight-six. But he adjusted from one ninety-nine down to one ninety-three-seven.
Correct.
Are, are you still sticking with one seventy-eight?
Um, I mean, it, I'm not saying it needs to be that. I just don't understand how we jumped so far from the one seventy-nine-five to the, even the one ninety-three-seven. I, I feel like that's a lot. And when you look in the houses in that area, I mean, we paid, uh, a lot of them are like a hundred and fifty thousand. I mean, they're not all selling for what we purchased our home for.
All right. Okay, do you have anything else?
No, ma'am, nothing.
Okay, so I understand that our decision is gonna be, uh, between the assessor saying one ninety-three-seven and you saying one seventy-eight-five or one seventy-nine-five?
One seven nine-five.
One seven nine-five.
Is what they appraised it for.
Okay. All right, you will hear from us either Saturday or Monday.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate you guys.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, so we're gonna close, um, B O E oh-six, and our next one will be B O E, um, I'm sorry, oh, that was oh-seven, oh-eight, R-two-one-three-seven-six-one-two-ten. Um, is he Derek saying?
Oh, yeah, he's there. I'm gonna be speaking on the half of it. We're on oh-eight now, right?
Yes. Is your correct address one-four-two-two-four Southeast Thirty-Something Place, Choppa?
Yes.
What would you like for us? You've been watching, right?
Oh, yes, and this is actually my second year here. I was here last year contesting the value then. Um, so I'm a little bit more prepared this year. I have provided the assessor six comparable sales, and they have all sold in twenty twenty-three, and actually all sold within six, the last six months of twenty twenty-three. Um, he came back with me with six different comps he used, two of the ones that I had provided. Um, out of the six, three of those were sold in different years. So one was sold in February of twenty twenty-two. The other two were sold in June and August of twenty twenty. Um, then the other two that we both had in our comparable report, um, both were in the five fifty. The comps that I had provided him were between five thirty and five fifty-five. Um, the second comparable, which is one-four-one-two-five, um, originally listed at six hundred thousand. They had five price reductions and ended up closing at five fifty with a five thousand dollar credit to buyer for closing costs. So, um, his comparable number three was brand-new construction, and that woman ended up rolling in everything into her loan. Um, so for me to even suggest that that, oh, my house is in the eight hundreds is ridiculous. Um, she had to bid, bring in filler to fill her backyard. She had landscaping done, matured trees run in, a pool with a retaining wall, fencing, all of that, um, for this brand-new home. I mean, her home is gorgeous. It's probably one of the best in the neighborhood. It's one of those parade of homes. Um, so that comparable is way out. But the other two that we did agree on, um, were both again in the five fifties. If you're looking at fair market value, I think that that's where my house should be. Um, I got the six oh-five value because last year he said that my pool was valued at fifty-five thousand dollars. So I just added the five fifty price range, um, to the fifty-five, assuming that the pool did not depreciate at all, which is also incorrect information, and that's where I came in at the six oh-five value.
Okay, you're at six oh-five and they're at, I remember you from last year, six, and they're at six forty-nine, right? No adjustments were made when you talked to them?
Oh, yeah, no, he didn't lower it.
To six thirty-two?
Six thirty-two, uh-huh.
Six thirty-five.
Which, again, I think the six oh-five, and I'm already being very generous, considering that pools do depreciate, and that was, the fifty-five thousand was the number that he gave me for twenty twenty-three.
What, what did we settle on last year?
He didn't adjust it at all.
It was six sixty-five?
Yep.
So.
Which was high to begin with, because last year I came in saying that my house is probably worth around six hundred, if that.
Okay, so.
And now we have homes in my neighborhood that have sold within point two miles of my house, and that were all in the five fifties.
So we're between six thirty-two-five and six oh-five, and you're sticking at six oh-five?
I'm saying it could even be lower. Six oh-five is generous of me.
That is the highest. Okay, and, uh, the, the five hundred figure that you're writing at, that, those are twenty. Okay, and, uh, the, the five hundred figure that you're writing at, that, those are twenty three sales?
All within six months of twenty twenty, the last six months of twenty twenty. And his were from twenty twenty.
Okay, we'll hear from the assessor.
Okay, I'm just looking at some information and the, the, the six thirty two number is based on, uh, the comps that they provided. Uh, they provided, and they did provide this information in the informal appeal. And so I use that analysis to, uh, derive at the six thirty two number, which is what is being appealed at this moment right now. Um. And then I, I ran some other comp reports I don't have with my sheet, but I have it listed in here. The other comp reports, I support a median value of six seventy three, five fifty and, uh, six forty two, eight twenty three. Um, and we, yeah, so the value last year, we weren't able to adjust it and it was at six sixty five hundred. So the value actually did go down from the previous year to the six forty nine. And then based on the comps, like I said, we, uh. Six thirty two, five hundred, which is two twenty seven sixty eight a square foot. And then she, they're, she's requesting six oh five, which is two seventeen seventy eight a square foot. And the twenty twenty four notice of values before the adjustments were made was two thirty three sixty two a square foot. And I just wanted to point out where the location is, Southeast twenty ninth, between, uh, Chalk Talk, it's right off of, uh, South Henny Road.
I'm also not sure where he's coming up with the six something, cause the comps that I provided were all between five thirty and five fifty, so.
Is it time adjusted?
The time adjustments, we have to factor that in as of December thirty first twenty three.
The time adjustments for the comps that he compared, I mean, you can do whatever, from twenty twenty, the homes that you sold can do whatever time adjustments. Fair market value is what homes are actually selling for. Your comparable number one and comparable number two both sold for five fifty. Comparable number two started out at six hundred thousand with five price reductions. So clearly those homes are not worth, and they're not selling for six hundred thousand.
Do they have pools?
No, but again, you guys valued the pool at fifty five thousand dollars last year, so that's why I added fifty five thousand to the last comparable highest priced home, which was five fifty. So that comes up to six oh five, not high six hundred.
Hmm, so you want a forty four thousand dollar reduction from last year's valuation, cause you said that was too high.
Yeah, that's why I was here last year. And I already, so I already overpaid last year and now you're trying to get me overpaid again this year, so.
And you know, we gotta do taxes.
I mean, exactly.
So, what they're saying right now would be a four point two percent decrease over last year's.
Well, it was decreased, you way overvalued it last year, I overpaid. I came here and you guys didn't adjust it at all. And, but I didn't have any comps back then to, to justify. Now we have two that sold within, you know, point two miles of my house and they've all sold in the five fifties. I don't understand how my house, that's smaller in square footing, could sell for mid-six hundred. That just doesn't make sense.
I was gonna ask, both of them were smaller than yours?
I have the smaller square foot home and all of the comps that I provided and all the comps that they provided.
Quality wise guys, between comps, is there any?
So she's.
Adjustment.
The sayings are good, or that, that comp that we use, all, except for one, the, uh, one four four oh one Southeast thirty seventh place. We have it on as a lesser quality, just one step below, but the others are all good quality and similar age, some of them. Now, Asheville Way is in another addition, that's a separate addition, but I am using that comp, cause that's what they provided.
What is that five, what's that comp? Let's see that form.
This right here?
Yeah.
Fifty seventeen Asheville Way.
What's the, what's, what's the price on it?
It sold for five thirty six.
Okay, so it's still, it's less than a five fifty.
And then we have an, a sales, a sale adjusted value of six nineteen five seventy eight.
I don't know, I mean, fair market is what homes are selling for, right? Like I said, that second comp, he listed it thinking he could sell it at six hundred, but ended up at five fifty plus an additional five thousand dollars closing cost.
Let me, let me ask this philosophical question. Um, ho- a home may sell for less because you shrink. Your pool with the rise in interest rates.
Correct.
Does that really make the house worth less?
No, but then if it was priced accordingly, like their comparable number one, which is also a comparable that I use, that home sold within sixty days. Which means it was priced correctly to begin with, which was priced at like five fifty. So at, starting at six hundred thousand when your house sits for six months, that means you were priced incorrectly.
No, it's, okay, so that's kind of not what I'm asking, though you agree with me, but then you gave an example there. I don't think it was comparable. Okay, let's do this again. A person can afford a five hundred thousand dollar house. With a two and a half percent interest rate, cannot support that at a six percent interest rate.
Correct, so your pool of buyers is lower.
Did the value of the house go down?
Well, yes, your homes are, I'm sure that now as a seller, you have to adjust according to that. If you know you have a hundred buyers, you can. They know it's a hot market, you can ask whatever it is that you want for that home. When you have five buyers that can afford that house, then you're gonna be more aggressive with your price.
Okay. That's all I have. You got anything else, assessor?
Thank you.
But you, you have a question?
No more for the assessor.
No, you get the last word.
Uh, again, I mean, as a seller, you can list your house to whatever you feel like you can get. I mean, I could list it for a million. But buyers aren't dumb these days. They have tools, even though he says that the Zillow isn't adequate, you know, Red, then you can see what other homes are selling for. If other homes are sitting in the market and the rest of the neighborhood's selling for five fifty, why would you pay for a smaller house in the six hundreds? You wouldn't.
Okay, so you'll hear from us Saturday or Monday?
Thank you.
Your question. Thank you. Sure. Okay, so we are closing BOE number eight and going to BOE number nine. Uh, Barrett Shelley.
Three folks.
Uh, okay, it's your correct address, eight oh one seven Bear Drive?
Yes, that's correct.
And I pronounced that correctly?
Yes, that's correct, like, thanks.
And Bear Paints?
Yes.
Okay, alright, so you received the valuation initially of, am I correct, of five hundred and thirty four thousand?
Yes, ma'am.
And what do you say it's worth?
Four eighty five.
Four hundred and eighty five thousand. And I wrote down here that there's a March. Twenty three sale for flat five hundred?
It goes four ninety nine nine, call was called five.
Cause that, that, that's you?
That's, that's correct, that's me.
So you had it almost a year, or almost a year now?
Correct, yeah.
But nine months to, to December thirty first?
Correct.
Okay, let me know what you want, want us to know.
Yeah, so, um. The market conditions, I mean, interest rates have obviously gone up, market kind of went downward from the time that I bought the property to end of twenty three. So again, I paid five hundred, what's called five hundred.
Right.
Um, after they adjusted it down, after my informal appeal, that's five oh nine, six hundred, so they're saying that. In the remaining nine months of the year after I bought it, that the property value went up. And I, I dispute that based on what's going on in my neighborhood and in the area.
They, they, they came down to five oh nine?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Six, six hundred?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, um, and I s- I still dispute the, the, the increase of the valuation of the property through the, the end of the year. Um, I think this one is a little bit different than some of the other folks that are presented. These are, these are new houses and a new development. Um, if you look at the trends of what's happened since we purchased the property, the, the builders have had a lot of, they have had tough times selling. So there's been a lot of properties that are just sitting there. In fact, I'm aware of at least three properties, probably more, that the builders have rented. In the neighborhood, which if, you know, builders, they don't wanna rent their properties. So that just is an indication of, they're having a tough time selling. Um, in the comps that I received, um, I felt that. The way the assessor works is that they adjusted the values up based on market parameters that they're kind of setting. As far as the actual sale prices of the comps that they provided, um, the highest one that they provided unadjusted was, uh, excuse me. Two hundred and one per square foot, which was their comparable number six. Um, I don't think comparable number six, um, was a good, uh, comparable. The neighborhood's actually split in two. There's, uh, I live on the south side, which is called Water Market Ridge Creek. There are actually a little bit smaller lots in Water Market Ridge Creek. The north side is, is called Ridge Creek. They tend to be on the, the north side, but larger lots in general. Um, and a little bit more, a little nicer finishes, just if you kind of look at the facades and the insides of the house, etcetera, et cetera. Um, for, for instance, comparable number six is zero point two seven acres, um, my house is zero point one nine acres. So for a kind of a new addition, there's quite a bit of a size discrepancy on that. Um, one of the other issues that I had with the comps is that they use comparable number five as my own property. And then they adjusted it for market parameters, which again, the county assessor is setting, um, which. Brought the adjustment up to, sorry, I thought, five one eight, I think it was two, two oh four a square foot, is what it was. Um, sorry, two oh seven a square foot. The other thing that I'll note, just as far as like trends in the area, these, if I were to sell my house right now, I wouldn't be selling it for. It would be tough for me to sell what I paid for. I don't think I'm gonna get what I paid for, I'm on a property right now. Because the builders are playing a little bit of a game. They're buying down interest rates and, 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 um. Offering more incentives than even when I bought the property. So when I bought the property, they gave me thirteen thousand dollars in like a, a rate buy down, plus two thousand for using the preferred vendor, so. Kind of essentially, obviously it's not apples to apples, four eighty five, but you can also show that if I was going to sell my house on the market right now. To achieve the same result, I'd have to offer something, some more, um. And then again, the, since that time, they started offering more around like thirty thousand dollars incentives in the area, so again. My property value has, has gone down. Um, one of the other things that I'll note about the comparables that were provided was the best comp is comp number two. And that comp is actually next door to our property. The unadjusted was, um, one hundred and ninety one per square foot. And that sold in September, which I like as well, because that was a little bit later in the year. And aside from the comp that I dispute, just number six, that was the latest comp provided. Which again, just kind of shows that the trends in the neighborhood and the market actually went down from a valuation perspective, from the time that we purchased the property in March.
Now, now which is the newer part of the neighborhood, yours or the larger lots?
My, they're, they're building on both sides of the neighborhood, um.
They're building something.
Yeah, so I think from a phase perspective, mine is actually newer, but there's no real, they're building on both sides right now.
And give me your.
You, you can go up there if you want, you wanna point if you.
Yeah, yeah, certainly.
And what is your, what is this major intersection?
Uh, that's Coffee Creek and Douglas.
I have your highlight right there.
Yeah, so.
Uh.
This is, uh, this is my property right here. There's nothing been, well, there's a house that's being built right here, which is. Again, kind of those larger lots, you can even see it right there, I don't even know, it's a pretty big acreage. The dividing really, because there's nothing here, is really, this part of the neighborhood up here would be the north side, Ridge Creek, and then everything, um, sorry, down from. Basically this below would be Water Market Ridge Creek, which is the site that I live on. Oh, and I provided a couple other comps to the assessor too. There was, there were right around the time that mine's, uh, purchased as well, I provided a comp for this one and this one. This one right here is rented, this one right here was rented in twenty twenty three as well. This one, I think they rented in twenty two, so I'm not sure if that's actually applicable to this kind of exercise, and then a couple of mystery have been rented as well. And even more, I know it came to twenty twenty four, but more in twenty twenty four as well.
Okay, we'll hear from the assessor.
So I know that the, based on, you know, past BOE hearings, that the subject sale doesn't like to be used in the analysis. So I went ahead throughout the subject sale when looking at this and we initially did support a value, uh, well, we actually lowered the value some, uh. We did lower the value some, uh, yeah, to five oh nine. I do agree with the, he did provide some comps and his comps are actually, your comps are really good. I support a median value of five hundred four thousand six twenty nine, which is close enough for me to say that I recommend we put you on for your purchase price. And that's a good, that's one of our strong indicators of, uh, you know, sale is what they, what you got, what you pay for the property. So I can support going down to, we can support going down to five hundred thousand, the purchase price.
Which is no increase in value in nine months.
Correct. Cause we originally lowered them down based on the comps to five oh nine and I'm thinking, alright, why don't we look at the comps that he provided? Not counting the subject sale, the subject property.
Can you live with that?
I still feel it should be lower. I mean, the, I would have a tough time selling right now in the neighborhood. I mean, builders are renting, it's, the market has really shifted. And I think that the market parameters are kind of like an overflow of the last couple of years before that of like. Hey, we're all seeing these great, you know, increases of the property valuation. So I s- I don't wanna live with that because it's not reflective of what's going on in the neighborhood right now.
And your neighbor next door was a hundred and ninety one dollars a square foot?
Mm-hmm.
And where, where are, where are you asking at four eighty five, what is that picture?
One ninety five, which is above that.
Oh, okay.
Which is kind of a mid-range of the comps. And I'd also, um, add in as well that. Unless I noted it, properties just weren't selling. The house across the street, it's not selling. It's been on the market since. I, I don't have, I don't have the MLS access. New house, it's not selling. They can't sell it. So our values are dropping.
Okay, so, do you agree that, um, people move. A lot for their children? And so, houses kind of come on the market this, um, after spring break to May, so they can get in them. By the time school starts the next year, right?
Yep.
And you got a new school, so you actually think the neighborhood's gonna continue to drop?
Well, we said in twenty three what happened, so I don't know what's gonna happen in twenty four. I can't say in twenty four.
How does that speak?
It's about three years old.
Okay. Okay, anything further?
No, I would just say that, uh, basically, I'm just talking about what happened in twenty three.
Sure.
I mean, I, as, I as a homeowner, I hope my property value goes up over time, but I'm just talking about what actually occurred in the nine months since it was purchased and that's all it is.
And you're rejecting the, the assessor's offer of five hundred thousand?
Correct.
Okay. Anything further?
No ma'am.
Any questions? Okay.
Awesome, thank you guys.
Sure.
Have a good one.
We're gonna close, uh, BOE number nine and go to BOE number ten. And, uh, Dale Boyer, and you have two, so, but we gotta do them separate, okay? Okay, so the first one is R one nine seven eight four one one nine five. And what, what I found on the assessor's page was different, but so I, but I'll ask anyway. Is the address of this property three one four one North Harbor, Chalk Talk? Okay. Okay, tell us what you like for us to know on this one.
Well, you know what, uh, I hope you don't get a real chance to say this, but I do appreciate whatever. Whatever technology used to measure square feet is pretty accurate, because I've been trying to find every, every way that would, uh. Show evidence that you, to support my, my case. The way you measure square feet is pretty accurate, but then, but some of the other things that, uh. And, and I would hope that, that, uh. Technology doesn't overtake this kind of situation here, where we have real people that we can talk to rather than punch a button and, and make a decision. But I mean, it seems like it's going that way, but hopefully we can, we can maintain, uh, the, the personal contact, and I appreciate that. One of the things that I objected to was the, uh, the condition. And, uh. The, uh, quality grade is listed as fair, and I was objecting to that, it's probably poor. And, and I don't know if you were passed on the pictures that I provided to the, the infom, the, uh, the current picture. It shows, I don't know if you have?
Yes.
You have those?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I would, I would say the condition's poor, uh, and as far as the comps that were provided, there's no, there's absolutely no comps that. you can compare with the condition of this house. Uh, it's it's not, uh, framed aluminum, it's framed some kind of siding, I don't know, but it's not aluminum. Uh, one of the questions I had, I didn't understand the neighborhood this bag, that you give the neighborhood, and I don't know whether this is appropriate place to ask what that means, but, I mean, is it, I mean, can I ask what that means, the twenty-two ninety-two, what does that mean?
Sure.
That's just the neighborhood we have assigned. That's the number we have assigned for that neighborhood. All neighborhoods in Oklahoma County are assigned neighborhoods. I don't know where they get that number from, I just know that's the, uh, classification they give that neighborhood.
And it could even be a census check.
So I've got others that you'll probably see me later, but it seems like that number changed either the same neighborhood. I bet when we talk about that later, this may not be an issue at this point. So, uh, that would be my my main concern, that somehow you justify the condition and the value. And I thought I was being generous by accepting the, uh, almost sixty-something thousand dollar market value, what is that, what is that number?
Ninety-six thousand?
No, the other number.
Um.
Oh.
We don't have the market, you probably talked about.
The tax, well, we don't deal with that, that's the, the treasury does.
Well, anyway, that's where my numbers, I thought I was being generous with that number. It was, uh, sixty-two thousand, yeah.
Yeah, that's what you're paying taxes on.
Right. Well, that that number right there, I think would be a a generous valuation for that house based on condition.
Where's your land in that? How much land is this house sitting on?
It's a lot. I mean, it's, I live, it's a lot.
Okay.
I don't know, I mean.
Point two five eight three acres.
Quarter acre.
Are you living in this house or is it a rental?
I'm sorry?
Like, are you living in this home or is it a rental?
It's a rental.
How much, how much do you get?
Oh. Um, well, I have to excuse, I think it's about eight hundred. I don't know if that matters, but.
What what do you say the value of this property?
Well, six two four five is the number up. And like I say, it's probably less than that, because the house is oh, can you pull up the, the, uh, the pictures of the house that I provided?
We do not have those pictures. Those were not provided.
They should be, so that you help make, help you make a decision.
Did you send those to us in the original appeal?
In the informal, yeah. Yeah, I'll show it to.
We have them.
Oh, you have, they have.
And they're not in our file here.
Okay.
Uh, I think there's pictures of the comps.
Comp, sorry.
Oh, the comps are there, okay.
These these pictures, uh.
You can, if they were presented in the informal, we could, we can, we can view them, so if you want to pass them over.
These current pictures.
They were not in the formal.
There shouldn't be.
Okay, I just, I don't, I don't wanna scoot out of turn, but may I for a second?
Sure.
Um, after the appeal was denied, the owner had come in for another property and tried to present pics of this property. So there were no, and this is according to the appraiser who did the hearing, so at this actual, uh, hearing, pictures were not provided during the informal of this property.
But what is the date on that picture?
This is, well, that's the last time we were out in that area for visual inspections, which was August of twenty-one.
Okay. And it doesn't, you're saying it doesn't look like that?
No.
Okay.
And I got, I got, I mean.
Sure.
I mean, you can almost smell these pictures.
Okay. Okay.
Did you have some bad renters?
I've had some. I mean, it's, I mean, it's it, quite honestly, uh, it it's on my list of the modest house.
Okay. Okay, so there, the the assessor, what do you, what what valuation are you getting?
We are, uh, ninety-six thousand. And that is a hundred and five dollars and twenty-six cents a square foot. The owner, Mr. Boyer, is requesting a value of sixty-two thousand four hundred and five, which would bring it at sixty-eight dollars and forty-three cents a square foot. And if, we are, we did run two different comps, and, uh, we ran one that was a six comp report, which supports a value of one hundred two thousand five fifteen. And then we ran another report that was three comps, and that was ninety-six thousand eight hundred and five.
So you went below about that?
Yes.
What valuation did you have on it last year?
Last year, we were at
Ninety-four five?
Ninety-four five. And then you were for that, was eighty thousand five hundred in twenty-two. But I just wanna reiterate that we, there were no pictures that were presented at the time of this exact appeal.
Did you understand this to be a rental?
Yes.
Did you know what the rental amount was?
No.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Boyer, you wanna tell us anything else about this particular property?
Well, I I, as I recall the conversation with the assessor's office, uh, he did ask me to bring in pictures, and I thought that's what I was doing when I booked this here. So, so I I hope, yeah, for.
I did have a question to the assessor, um, if we go, what is, I mean, is it poor quality? Is that the next down?
So we, uh, right now, we have it on as
Fair.
Fair, and then the next one below below that would be poor.
Okay.
Or I'm sorry, uh, low. And then then, yeah. Typically, one in a property is on poor condition. It would be, for the most part, we would have it on at, uh, salvage, which would be five dollars a square foot.
You did that one last year.
Correct, you'd have, you'd have to be completely uninhabitable with, yeah.
This is, uh, probably really close.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Boyer, we're gonna close on this one and move to the next one, uh, BOE number eleven, R one nine seven eight five one two four five. And I have this address as three one eight four Cox in Chalk Town, is that accurate?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, tell us what you wanna know. The assessor has this on four hundred and thirty-five five, unless they deduced it in.
Sorry, I don't wanna get there.
So it's one thirty-five five, what do you, what do you say?
Well, my, uh, my focus on this was the purchase price.
Fifty-one thousand?
Yes, ma'am.
In in December of twenty-two?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Uh, I I don't think it's fair that we should be penalized, because we are presented with the opportunity, a business opportunity, and it just looks like that's what has happened. Uh, I'm not disputing there may be a value, but the purchase price should should, uh, justify a a certainly some consideration as far as the appraisal, because I, that's what it's sold for. I mean, they they offered to sell it at that price, and and we paid that.
Were you related to the seller?
No, not at all. Uh, no, no relation at all, and I didn't, didn't even know.
Okay. Okay. So we're way far apart, so it's one thirty-five five with the assessor and fifty-one. Okay, but let me just ask this philosophical question. Is this a rental?
Yes.
And is it currently rented?
Yes.
Do you know how much for? Or price, not like?
About a thousand.
Okay, so are you saying that your property, um, in, let's see, one year, cause this is December of twenty-two to December thirty-first of twenty-three, that there was absolutely no increase in the value of the property?
And from whose, whose yours?
The valuations that we get, that you're complaining about, this one thirty-five, that was effective December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, which was a year after you purchased it. And if you purchased it for fifty-one, you're saying it did not increase in value at all?
Why don't know. I mean, I haven't, I've.
Okay.
I don't know.
Okay.
I mean, I just don't.
Okay. Did you make any improvements on it after you purchased? Didn't paint it?
No.
Okay. Mike?
So I would want to point out that we call this an invalid sale. It was a personal representative's deed. Uh, and we don't recognize that as being a valid transaction. There's no, uh, reasonable exposure to the market. There was no, it was not advertised, uh, so that fifty, the, uh, the fifty-one thousand is not an accurate number for the market. And, uh, I just wanted to point out that, um, going back a few years, in twenty-three, we had the home valued at a hundred and thirty-three thousand.
Right.
In twenty-one, it was valued at, or twenty-two was valued at one twenty-three. The furthest back I can go to look at a value is eighty-nine thousand three hundred and two dollars in twenty fourteen. And that is the lowest we've had it going back, keeping track of records, but we ran two different comps. Uh, one was a six comp report supporting a median value of a hundred and fifty-three thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars. And then we ran it like a three comp report, a median value of one hundred fifty-six thousand seven hundred and thirty-five dollars, which is higher than what we currently have him at right now, so we we just, we can't use that fifty-one thousand as a valid sale. It's just, there's no, there's no way.
Uh, Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Can you tell me why you got, why you did not got, get either a quick claim, claim or a warranty deed on this property?
I thought I did. I'll pull up the deed.
Okay.
I mean, I've got title insurance. Then not a warranty deed.
Well, Mike explained why the assessor's office doesn't accept, not that you don't accept, but personal rep deeds.
Does any time, typically, personal reps can also mean an estate sale. And anytime something that is, typically, we look at it that way. If that's an estate sale, we don't recognize estate sales, um, because they're trying to get rid of the property and just trying to get what they can for it. And it's just not, there's no reasonable exposure, there's no willing buyer, willing seller. Uh, the owner is, or the seller's not under any duress. Um, so there is, it's it's just not acceptable for reasonable market parameters for that area.
I don't understand why it's not accepted, or if if it's being offered for sale.
No, to be used as comps. If if someone else was doing a comp in the area, they wouldn't use that sale.
That puts me at a disadvantage.
Would you sell us that home for fifty-one thousand dollars today, or would you ask more?
Well, I'd try.
Cause you got, cause you got a heck of a deal.
Well, well, there's no, no dispute in that. The fact remains, it was the purchase price that was asked, and I paid you.
Right.
Was there a Realtor for sale sign on the property?
Uh, no.
How'd you find out about that?
I don't know. Uh, the Realtor told me about the property. But I don't think any commissioners, I, I don't know.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll consider that you're at fifty-one and the assessor's at one thirty-five five, and we'll make our decision on that.
Thank you.
And we will inform you in the letter.
Okay, thank you.
Pull your frame off. So we're gonna close BOE eleven and move to BOE twelve. James Guzak?
He just sent an email, uh, Cassie just went and checked what he sent, uh, without having word until now.
Okay.
If he's gonna be here or not, or my phone call or not, so that's what I want.
Wait, you're committed, that's good. Thank you, sir, for coming in.
Okay, one more thing.
Sure.
Try, try to maintain this this situation. Don't let it go, punch a button to make decisions.
Oh, we sure will.
Thank you.
Yeah, we have four-year appointments, so we think we're gonna be around for a while.
Okay, go ahead. No, you go, it's yours.
So call, but no answer, but it was email sent.
Yes, we, we, she sent the email. As far as the notice went, she also mailed it out to him. Um, I've tried to call him twice this morning now. It goes straight over to voicemail. Um, he's supposed to be calling the phone right out here back, but.
It was tough to get a hold of in the, in the informal, so.
Um. But he, he was notified at the meeting today. She did send him an email.
Okay, I'm gonna say, well, well, obviously, he's not here today. If we don't hear from him this week, he's just gone. If he makes an effort to contact this week, we'll consider giving him a shot, a second shot.
Okay.
Cause we, we tried to give him three dates, and if it does, it doesn't work on the third date, but we're not hearing you from him, that's something different.
Yeah, he did, he did call and leave a voicemail for us. Um,
Did it say?
Asking him to call us back, to for us to call him back just now. I did just do that, and it's still well above the voicemail.
Okay, just let us, let us know Friday what he says. You'll probably hear from him Friday. Okay, are there any citizens participate, who want to participate? Who are those people back there? Do we know those people?
There.
Yeah. All right, um.
Board comments?
Any board comments? We're happy to have our newest member.
Thank you.
We're here because we're here, and we're glad you're here.
I'm gonna comment a little on mixed week scheduling. I've got a medical issue at all, once we go off camera, I'll talk to you all about, but I can only be here Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday next week. And after that, I'm gonna be unavailable for Thursday, Friday, and probably the next day.
All right, do I have a motion for adjournment?
He did just, he did just, um, call back and leave another voicemail. So he would like us to try and call him again. Would you like us to try and?
Sure.
Oh, he wants to to have his hearing.
Evidently.
Oh, okay.
It's about, I would think, informal, it's.
Really?
And then he came in person, so it was.
So this is, uh, Meridian, Meridian.
Eight one seven nine zero five eight three zero nine, I'm out of bed, who's in the?
I'm in straight to voicemail.
Eight one seven is, eight one seven is a Texas name. Doesn't mean anything.
Well, he, he lives here. He lived at the top.
So it rolled, rolled straight to voicemail. He must have a deal that disturbed all his phones.
And by.
We'll call him again. Uh, I would move to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.